Fourth, 2018 Regular Board Meeting. We have just finished an executive session where we discussed student appeals and admission into the district adult education program. At this time, we will move into item 3.1, an inspirational moment by Mr. Tom Hudson, who is the South Carolina School Improvement Council Executive Director and District Two parent and community advocate as well. Mr. Hudson, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a privilege to be with you all this evening and to share this moment with you, which is a poem which has particular meaning to me, and that is the poem "If" by Rudyard Kipling. If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you; if you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, but make allowance for their doubting too; if you can wait and not be tired by waiting or being lied about, don't deal in lies; or being hated, don't give way to hating, and yet don't look too good nor talk too wise; if you can dream and not make dreams your master; if you can think and not make thoughts your aim; if you can meet with triumph and disaster and treat those two imposters just the same; if you can bear to hear the truth you've spoken, twisted by naves to make a trap for fools; or watch the things you gave your life to, broken, and stoop and build them up with worn-out tools; if you can make one heap of all your winnings and risk it on one turn of pitch and toss and lose, and start again at your beginnings and never breathe a word about your loss; if you can force your heart and nerve and sin you to serve your turn long after they are gone, and so hold on when there is nothing in you except the will which says to them, "Hold on." If you can talk with crowds and keep your virtue, or walk with kings nor lose the common touch; if neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you, if all men count with you but none too much; if you can fill the unforgiving minute with sixty seconds' worth of distance run, yours is the earth and everything that's in it, and which is more, you'll be a man, my son. Now, what touches me about these words, and if we peer through the Victorian phrasing, it's how they speak to the character within each of us and its response to challenges, disappointments, or adversity, and therefore sows an abiding sense of hope. For those of us who labor in the noble fields of education, for those of us who are blessed to be parents, there are perhaps few more meaningful moments than when we teach a young person new facts, or new ideas, or processes, and we see that light bulb appear in an aha moment. But perhaps even more special is when we are working with that child and they experience such a moment when they realize the resources, the stuff, that they already have within them, that they already possess, no matter how seemingly hidden or unknown, the tools of self with which they can dare to build their futures. Thus, the taught tutors the teacher, and I believe that is what makes all of our work worthwhile. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I know the "if" is one of my favorites, and we can all extrapolate something from that. Thank you for that. We'll now move on to item 4.1, approval of our current agenda. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda of the regular board meeting, July 24, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been moved and properly seconded, and we'll take it to a vote. By a vote of seven to zero, we'll approve the agenda of the current board meeting. At this time, we'll move into, move to item 5.1, Special Recognitions. Dr. Davis, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before us this evening, we have Ms. Libby Ruth to bring us Special Recognitions. Ms. Ruth?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and I'm going to ask for your help with presenting the award to start off with, because tonight, it's all about recognizing you, our board members. So, if you will. We have five school board members who we want to recognize for achieving levels of completion at the South Carolina School Boards Association Boardmanship Institute. The Boardmanship Institute offers year-round training focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national educational issues. Board members can achieve up to six levels of recognition by earning points for participating in statewide conferences and completing training on-site in their own district. The Boardmanship Institute helps board members develop skills, stay abreast of education issues, and attend workshops focused on school law, advocacy, and legislation. So, for the first presentation, we'd like to recognize our new chair, Ms. Amelia Mackey, who completed Level Four. So, if you will come forward and get your certificate and pen, and then Ms. Jones will take your photograph, and then we'll call up the next group.
I was getting pretty aggressive, is what I was doing.
Two other board members received, earned, completed Level Four, and they are Craig Plank and Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. If you will come forward. Level Four, you earned 200 points within four consecutive years, and they are receiving a certificate and a pen with a blue stone in it. Not quite yet, Ms. Mackey. We have two more. I would ask Ms. Lindsey Agostini and Mr. James Shad to come forward. They have earned 100 points in the training from the School Board Association, so that means they have reached Level Three within two consecutive years or less. They receive a certificate and a gold pen. I will mention that our own Dr. Elkins Johnson was recently informed by the School Board Association that she passed her test for the last level and has completed all six levels. We don't get to recognize her tonight because they need to do it officially first, but after the School Board Association recognizes her, then we will be presenting her with a pen, and I believe you get a, hold on a second, I'll tell you, a pen with a clear stone for Level Six. Must be a diamond. I bet it's a diamond.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda for the regularly scheduled board meeting, July 24, 2018.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Plank. It's been moved by Mr. Plank and properly seconded, Mrs. Agostini, that we approve the consent agenda, and we will take it to a vote at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, we will, we have approved the consent agenda as presented. At this time, we'll move to item 7.1, Public Participation. I don't see where anyone has, has anyone signed up? Okay. I think I'm getting it now. Thank you so much. Just for future reference, if anyone ever wants to present to the board, there are forms outside the door. Feel free to sign up, as you have, to speak tonight. Rhonda Meisner, is that correct? Correct me if I'm mispronouncing your name. Welcome to the podium. The red light, I think, is already on. You have three minutes in which to speak. This will be televised on YouTube, just to let you know, so that you know, and if you could be kind enough to refrain from using any specific school or personnel references, that would be helpful, and...
Well, actually, one of the agenda items said if there was a specific incident that the board wanted to know about, so is that a change in what you've requested via the document, or?
Yeah. That's fine. You're free to mention the issue, but not just specific personnel, if you can. If you could speak in generalities.
So, titles would suffice?
That's fine. That's fine. That's not a problem. That's not a problem.
Okay, so I am here for a couple of reasons, one of which was, I can't remember if it was two years ago or three years ago, where the whole board was changed. And first of all, I want to thank you for all of your service. I mean, you guys are taking time away from your families, and on behalf of our students, we hope. The only person that actually survived that coup, if you will, was Mr. Manning, and I think Mr. Manville was on the board, was on the seat opposing him. In any event, my point is, there are a couple of things on the agenda item that I am particularly concerned with, specifically, the changing the wording from the broad overview of state purchasing items to exclude, there is a specific exclusion for the board members not to be able to participate in Richland II purchases from their family or from anything else. That change is an issue for me, because there is a reason that they made you guys actual wording that you can't participate or your family can't participate. Secondarily, going on to the funding thing, you're asking for a bond referendum for changes in the school for security and so forth. However, you've never addressed the inefficiencies of the schools as they are. You're busing students for an hour and forty minutes from all over the place, Lake Carolina to Blythewood, Park Lane to Westwood. If some of the inefficiencies were addressed, I think that there's no reason for a bond referendum. I support fully any security efforts for you, for your families, for the children, for the schools. However, you guys are supposed to be the body, and you're allowing the tail to wag you. And that's getting to my next thing. I don't know the superintendent, however, I do know that I've left messages that have been unreturned. I don't appreciate that. I've called Mr. Plank, and my phone call was not very pleasant, but he did return my phone call and had a very lengthy explanation of why things didn't happen. I appreciated Ms. Monica, Dr. Monica Elkins Johnson's comments about the alcohol here. There are many good things that you guys are doing, but you are the policymakers. You guys have to take the lead and stop letting the tail wag the dog, and I'm just challenging you to do that, because otherwise, I think that I'm going to lead the charge to get all of you off again. We've got to have somebody that are looking out for the kids, not letting kids stay on buses, not thinking about what their individual needs are. So, I think I have four seconds left, and in those seconds, I would like to thank you again for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Meisner, for taking the time to attend the board meeting tonight and to share your thoughts and concerns. As you know, we're not able to address your concerns at this time, but if you have any specific questions, someone can certainly get back with you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who signed up tonight? And if there's anyone else who requests to address the board but hasn't signed up, there will be another opportunity to do so later in the meeting. At this time, we'll move to item 8.1, Legislative Update. Dr. Miley, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be brief. The legislature finished the budget June 28, about a month later than they normally do, and that was, we have not met, you as a board have not met since then, and I thought I'd give you just a brief update, that the adoption, that the budget that the state legislature did adopt, June 28, was very similar in terms of education impact as the Senate version that we had based the budget on. So, the budget that we brought to you back in April and May included the assumptions based on the base student cost of $60 increase, the 1%, well, at that time, it was between a 1% and 2% increase for schools, for schools teachers, and so our budget, in essence, we don't need to make any amendments. We were worried that, at one time, that they were considering a 1.5% increase or a 2%, and we might have to come back to you with amended budget, but basically, with a few tweaks, everything that we assumed in our budget in May, the legislature stuck with and adopted in late June, so I just wanted to let you know that our budget was sound and that we had based it on the Senate version and that that's what they adopted. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? And Dr. Miley, with school buses, were there any changes significantly, do you remember, regarding school buses, school bus funding?
They included, it looks like, 11, almost $30 million in excess unclaimed property lottery prize money for the purchase and lease of school buses. I believe that's what we had been told earlier in May during the year, but that's what, you know, it would take 100 million to actually adequately fund buses, but they're spending about $30 million on it this year. Now, it's good to, is that they did end up with about $170 million in surplus at the end of fiscal year, so we're hoping that they, that that will be applied to next year, and hopefully, we'll have some more luck, better luck next year. So, thank you.
Dr. Miley, are there any questions? Dr. Miley? If not, thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 9.1, Student Appeals. If I could get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for student number one, for Blythewood Academy, and student number two, Blythewood Academy. Okay, we're going to separate this. It was asked to be pool, so we'll go back to student number one, Blythewood Academy, and we'll take a vote on that.
Thank you. Is there another motion at this time?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a recommendation that we deny the student's appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Manning, seconded by Mr. Plank, that for student number one, the appeal be denied, and we'll take it to a vote at this time. Can we, can we change that and then let the minutes reflect that it's been changed? By a vote of four to three, the motion carries. Can we get a motion for student number two?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for student number two, Blythewood Academy.
Can I get a second? It's been moved by Dr. Elkins Johnson, properly seconded by Mr. Shad, that student number two be recommended to Blythewood Academy, and we'll take it to a vote at this time. By a vote of three to four, the motion fails. Can we get another motion at this time?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Plank?
I'd like to make a motion that, for student number two, that we deny the appeal.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Plank, properly seconded by Ms. Agostini, that student number two, the appeal be denied, and we will vote at this time. By a vote of four to three, the motion carries. At this time, we will move on to item 9.2, Student Admission. It's actually one, Request into the District's Adult Education Program. Can I get a motion at this time?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the student into the adult ed program.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly seconded that we accept the admission request into the district's adult education program, and we'll take it to a vote at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. At this time, we will move to item 10.1, Approval of Policy Revisions, DJ Purchasing, DJGA Sales Calls and Demonstrations, New, GCOA Evaluation of Instructional Staff, and Since Action Is Requested. Can we get a motion at this time?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I move that we approve the recommended policy revisions as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I mentioned that I had a question. Second, if I can help you. I'm keeping my mic on, so you all bear with me. My apologies. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. At this time, we will move to item 11.1, Dr. Davis. Was there, actually, bond referendum for capital projects, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Manning?
I make a, Madam Chair and board members, as you know, many district partners, employees, parents, and community members have spent a great deal of time researching, reviewing data, and giving feedback on facility needs across this district. Using this data, the district has developed a funding plan that addresses safety, safety, excuse me, safety and security facility needs, and updates our older facilities to support 21st century teaching and learning in every school. In light of this work, I move that we adopt the resolution ordering a referendum to fund the proposed amount not to exceed $468,406,000.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Manning and seconded by Dr. Caution Parker, a proposal. Is there any discussion at this time?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
Thank you. I'd like just to take this opportunity. I support completely what is included in our proposal. Along the guidelines that we were given in discussion that we had last week, what, that would fall within the guidelines was to include an aquatic center, which is not included in this proposal. Many think that the only people that will benefit from an aquatic center would be our high school swim teams. As a former aquatics director, I feel that swimming is a fundamental, just like reading and writing. Just in the last year, we've had two Richland II students drowned in a neighborhood lake. We could use a pool as part of physical education to teach our children how to swim. In this past school year, we sent approximately 100 students over to the YMCA elementary students, and not one of them, upon arrival, could pass the swim test. Other ways that we can utilize an aquatic center, it can be a community center, where our adults and our senior citizens can come for water aerobics and for lap swimming. When a senior citizen or a more mature person goes to the doctor and they say, "You need to get in and exercise, the best place for you is the pool." We can utilize it for physical therapy. Going back to the swim teams, last year, Blythewood High School and Spring Valley were not able to have their region swim meet because there was no facility in the area to accommodate the swim team, because there were too many teams. We just don't have the facilities. Our swim teams swim from August to the beginning of October, and October, generally, it's 60 degrees outside, the pool temperature is 70 degrees. To put that in perspective, for those that don't know about swimming, in a triathlon, it's wet suit legal at 77. 70 degrees is very cold for pool temperature. We do not have the facilities on this side of town to teach our children how to swim or make them safe in the water. So, it is my opinion that I would love to see a pool included in our referendum. Thank you.
Are there any comments at this time, or questions? Dr. Caution Parker?
I completely agree with Ms. Agostini. I think it would be, it would just be absolutely wonderful to have the aquatic center here in Richland II. However, I think we need to do a complete study, we need to pick a site, we need to have partnerships, we need to have the plan completely in place to present to the community regarding the aquatic center, but I am complete agreement with that. We do need to have one. However, I don't think that it needs to be in this bond referendum now, that we would need to focus on the safety and security of our schools and making sure that we have our schools up to date for our children, for teaching and learning. So, I don't disagree. I think we need to, once this passes, we get past this, we need to come together and we need to do a complete study, just as we did on the stadiums that we're proposing, just for the schools as we're proposing, and the safety and security of our schools as we're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Are there any additional comments or questions at this time? Mr. Shad?
While I don't disagree with Ms. Agostini, I definitely agree with Dr. Caution Parker.
Turn your mic on.
I agree with Ms. Agostini's concerns, and I think that we did have to consider that as well. We did have to admit that we got the cross section of constituents, and that a situation of equal opportunity was almost inevitable, and it was just not a time to watch. I stay as concerned with the day, with you, with this one, with you, the concern that a law is certified by our constituents, and that it not only helped, but it's just that the day is not a day to be respected.
Madam Chair? Thank you, Mr. Shad. Mr. Plank?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, not so much on that, as just the general concept of this bond, and, you know, back, and without sounding too melodramatic, back on February 14th of this year, we had a school shooting in Parkland, Florida. That was horrific, and at that time, my phone rang off the hook. Emails came pouring in about the safety and that, what are we doing in our... Emails came pouring in about the safety and that, what are we doing in our schools to make sure that it's safe? We've done studies throughout our district now for, certainly since then, but even prior to that, on what safety in schools looks like. What is it, you know, can you walk directly in a school and just bypass the front office and get into the, into the actual classrooms? How long does it take for an active shooter to get onto the, to the campus and wreak destruction? These are things that we've been faced with. It is hard, hard to, to, to look at putting additional taxation into the community. And at the same time, we are hearing the community say, "We've got to protect and have safe schools." And so I just want to let you know that this has been, this has been a lot of work. This has been over a couple of years of deep exploration in growth and safety and academics. And so, tonight, we just come before you humbly, having researched this, and, and hope the community will embrace our decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, Dr. Miley, would you be willing to speak to the, to our debt millage and the impact of this on, on our debt millage opportu, eight, how that affects potentially our 8% funding, and kind of some long-range components of that?
I'd be glad to. The, in terms of the overall resolution that y'all have seconded, the impact is estimated to be a total of up to 10 mils, maximum impact, from the bond resolution as, as proposed and seconded tonight. The impact of the, of a, of an aquatic center by itself, we had not done. I did some research yesterday, and the timing of that would, the timing of when it would occur would have impact. But it could be anywhere from zero to maybe two mils of the impact of a $20 million pool, aquatic center. The 8%, the estimate that we see of the impact of the bond issue, of course, the full bond resolution that you've, that you, is up for consideration, would not be done at one time. Obviously, there'd be planning, design work, bond issues would be made over the first year or two, relatively small amounts, until construction would start. And so the impact would not be immediate, and at the same time, we're retiring debt. So, we, and we, it will depend on the timing of those projects, in terms of the overall impact on the, on the millage rate. Depending on how that happens in the market, the, the impact could be substantially less than 10 mils. It will not, and that estimate includes our continuing $10 million a year in 8% maintenance funds. Those are funds that we have built into the plan in terms of needing that. If we don't need that, obviously, we have some excess capacity building up. But our plan is that that maintenance would continue. The issuance of these bonds, we'd sell these bonds as needed, as the cash flow will require them to build certain projects. You know, that would vary depending on the projects and how the timing and the cash flow needed. And so our estimate is 10 mils total impact over the course of this bond resolution, of the completion of all these projects.
Okay, so that would be, keep our 8% at our current expenditure, current levels.
That's what we plan at this point, yes. We don't see any need to change that right now.
Okay. And of course, our 8% is used for technology needs and maintenance needs and things that are...
It's used to close the gap of the shortage that we have in those items. It almost meets our sustainability requirements for IT, and is far less than what we need for true maintenance of all our facilities.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you look at the, the impact to the community versus the benefit, we've had a lot of school board members talk about safety, which is always a priority. If you don't feel safe, then everything else we do is of no value. So, safety has to be a priority. I also think some of the components of access and equity, we look at some of the bus, the transportation needs that we're addressing here. It was mentioned the time that our students spend on, on buses, and we know that our district is one of the rare districts that has tried to be efficient, triple route, or bus routes, and that has come back to hurt us from the State Department aspect, because we have less buses, and every bus that breaks down affects us much more than it does many other districts. And so I like the, the fact that we've built in some components to meet both our needs for activity buses, but we'll also be able to use those to help to cut down on the impact for those students that are missing half of their first period on a regular basis, or missing the first part of their day because of those issues. So, that, our, our maintenance needs that our 8% cannot keep up with, because the cost of HVAC systems and roofs and things are just beyond what that money can afford to do. I think that y'all did a great job putting this together. The board has had the opportunity to weigh in, the community has the opportunity to weigh in. And while I also agree that the aquatic center, I was the one that brought it up at the work session, and feel like that we should do it, but without a concrete plan, I just feel like we do need to give that some more thought before we ask the community for it. So, thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to, to hopefully being able to bring this to the community for their support in November.
Well, thank you, but that hard work has been done by a large group of people, trust me.
Well, I meant when I say, I didn't mean you specifically.
Well, I knew that. For some reason, I knew that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns?
Madam Chair, if I may just follow up with one other item, and I thought you were maybe going to allude this, but for the benefit of our public, they hear 10 mils, they hear 2 mils. If you could just speak to what that translates into per 100,000 of property value.
The, the, the average, the average home, we got this from the tax assessors, Richland County Tax Assessor, the average home is valued $167,000 in Richland two. This would be about a $65 annual impact, or roughly about $5.50 a month impact on the average homeowner in Richland District two. It also would impact the cars, vehicles, you pay taxes on that also. It would be about 43 cents on the average car in Richland two. The average car value, based on the tax assessor's office, is $8,500 per car. So that would be about 43 cents. So roughly about $6 a month would be the estimated maximum impact. Again, depending on the market, depending on the timing of those bond issues, we hope that it would be less, but it could be as much as 10. That would be the maximum impact from this bond resolution on the average taxpayer.
Thank you. I think I heard the word "only," I'll remember, and I'll just pick on you a little bit, because I learned a long time ago, in my business, I used the word "only" one time, referring to what the increase in cost would be. And I learned quickly that only a dollar, only $5 is still can be quite substantial.
Can I take that back? It will be a whopping $6.
So, I just want to, and at the same time, it is with that dollar amount, in exchange for what we are, what we would like to see done, from the things Mr. Manning had talked about, the other fellow board members have talked about, I think, when you look at that holistically, it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Got you. Are there any questions or concerns for Dr. Miley at this time?
I do want to comment, and Mr. Plank, I was going to ask him to break that down in real dollars, to make it look, to get an idea of what that looks like for taxpayers. And I want to insert that regardless of how this vote goes, I do appreciate the process, this process. We've had quite a few opportunities for parents, community members, partners, elected officials. I know the staff has met, you know, ad nauseam, in schools, not recently, but this has been a years, years-long process, to try to prioritize. There are so many needs and things that we, things that we need, and some of our needs are wants, some of our wants are needs. And I think that we've worked hard and laboriously to try to prioritize what we can do for now while being, while being mindful of the taxpayers' dollars and things that we do at this time. So I just wanted to also make a note that with the history that, the research that we've been provided, the reason that bond referendums and even 8% money has to be delineated is because you're held accountable for the way that we spend the money. And it is my understanding that the things historically that we've said we're going to spend money on, and I mean "we," because I haven't been on the board forever, but historically, the things that the board has delineated, that it's going to spend the money on, it is just that. So I appreciate the track record of transparency and trust with regard to the same.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Caution Parker.
I'm given my age now, but in my 30, now 38 years, but 34 years working in Richland School District two, we have not passed a bond referendum, we haven't even tried since 2008, so that's 10 years ago. But one thing that I can say about Richland two, way back in 1980, when I first started this district, and there's some folks in here that go way back to 1982, we always do what we say we're going to do with, with the funds. There's never any question, there's never any doubt. We have never even been questioned about, "You didn't spend the money like you said you were going to do." We have always done what we say we're going to do. And I think that's a lot of credibility for Richland School District two. And again, as, as, as a, as a person who lives here in Richland School District two and has worked in the district, I can honestly say that when we go to the public for, for bond referendum, this is something we really need. It's not done at the spur of the moment. It takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot of energy, takes a lot of study, and we do ask for community input as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Are there any additional comments or questions for Dr. Miley at this time? If not, we'll move to the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. At this time, we will move to item 12.1. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, before you this afternoon, this evening, we have a proposal for policy revisions, GBEB, Staff Conduct. If you have any questions, Dr. Franklin, stand ready. To answer those questions, or Ms. Williams, out of things we have, I'm sorry. Ms. Williams.
When you're ready. Thank you.
Again, provided it's a more comprehensive policy, along with recommendations from the administration, the School Board, the Association, the Labor Council.
Are there any questions or comments at this time? Thank you, Ms. Williams. At this time, we will move to item 12.2, A Report Regarding the Dual Language Immersion. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, on a report from Dual Language Immersion Program, we have Dr. Cassandra Bozier and members of her team. Dr. Bozier.
Okay. Good evening. Cordial greetings to our Madam Chairperson, Ms. Mackey, to all of the board members, our superintendent, Dr. Davis. Good evening to each and every one of you. It is a great pleasure that I stand before you to give you an update for the Dual Language Immersion Program for Richland School District two, that just happened to be housed at Polo Road Elementary School. You've received a complete report prior to this presentation, so the purpose of this presentation is just to highlight some spotlights in that report. On the description of the program, the Dual Language Immersion Program at Polo Road serves two purposes. One is to, upon the, when Dr. Franklin was there, there was a need for the closing of the achievement gap of our wide population of English language learners, our Spanish-speaking English language learners there. As well, on the other hand, the other need that the Dual Language Immersion Program addressed was to have a foreign language program component that would start as early as the elementary school. Our Dual Language Immersion Program at Polo Road Elementary School has a kindergarten entry point, where students will go through the choice, magnet choice program, and the entry point starts in kindergarten. Our program is considered to be the 50/50 model, where our students spend half of their day in the English setting. Our meets classes, excuse me, we have classes that are ideally meets 50/50 with our native English speakers and our heritage Spanish speakers. And each half of the day, they spend their, half of their time in the English classroom setting, and the other half in their Spanish classroom setting. Our program at Polo Road Elementary School has four goals. Unlike your traditional bilingual or foreign language program, we seek to make sure that we address the need for bilingualism, bi-literacy, biculturalism, and academic proficiency. As far as academic achievement is concerned, research has shown that both heritage speakers, heritage Spanish speakers and native English speakers in a bilingual program such as ours demonstrate large gains over time, when they've spent a significant amount of time in the program, in both math and reading. Actually, by the time they reach middle school, which our, our students are quickly approaching that point, both, both groups scored at or well above grade level in the areas of reading and math. And so just taking a peek at how the current academic achievement is measured and communicated at Polo Road Elementary School, for the most part, the majority of our students are, have their achievement measured in the same ways that a lot of our traditional students have their achievements, achievements measured. And that is by way of the report cards, the report card rubrics in grade scale through two, progress reports that are sent home by our teachers, map for grade levels two, DRA two in kindergarten, and what makes our, what the academic measures that are specific to our DLI students comes in the form of EZCBM that is administered in both math, excuse me, English and Spanish for grades one and two. And this year, we will bring on, because we're expanding to third grade in our fourth year of implementation, the stamp assessment. And also, earlier in the fall, we had Mr. Greg Duncan, who was an independent program evaluator, that came over to assess our programs and give customized and embedded professional development for our teachers. When we take a look at the snapshots for next steps, these are some immediate steps for our program at Polo Road Elementary School. Number one, we are looking to make sure that we increase and improve homeschool communications. We are also making sure that there is a provision of authentic instruction materials and resources that are available for our teachers. And again, I mentioned the oncoming of the stamp assessment, which will begin in third grade as we administer that assessment to develop a baseline for language proficiency. Also, and thanks to the board and the budget that has been approved, we got to hire a full-time dual-language immersion lead teacher by name of Ms. Elizabeth Lawrence Baez, who joined us this year. And also, we will continue with authentic professional development opportunities for our teachers who teach in the program. So with me, I have Ms. Baez, who's standing with me. That concludes our presentation of spotlights, of things that we wanted to spotlight as a result of the report that was given to you. And we will pause now for any questions that you may have of us.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or concerns at this time? Mr. Manning?
Y'all know I'm excited about this program. I think for years, I just talked about, we need foreign language, we need foreign language back in our elementary schools. And while it's not, is certainly proliferated as I would like, I still appreciate this program and the opportunities. Ms. Baez, welcome aboard. I'm excited to have somebody dedicated to this program, and, and I can see sort of your immediate impact. I assume you had some input on these next steps in the program and where we're going. And I like what I see here. I like the focus, attention, the detail, a lot of things that I see in some other programs that I know are effective, and, and so I'm really excited to see, and I know it's not on the presentation up there, but for the, the, the public, it's very detailed about what the next steps are, both short-term and long-term. So thank you very much. Look forward to seeing these things be put into place and, and the impact from that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Are there any other comments at this time? Ms. Agostini?
Thank you. I have a few questions. Thank you, first of all, so much for your presentation. One thing that I just found from reading the information and the narrative, I didn't realize that closing the achievement gap was part of the initiation of this program. One of my questions is, is this not a lottery program, like our other elementary Magnus?
Yes.
Then how would we identify, if it was through lottery, the at-risk students that are making the achievement gap?
So we're really looking at closing the achievement gap between heritage Spanish-speaking students and to those who are in non-immersion programs, such as traditional ESOL or ELL services that are provided. Studies show across the nation that ELL students who are able to learn, specifically based on Spanish-speaking students, who are able to learn in their native language or heritage language as well, they are then able to, we close the achievement gap with how they perform in comparison to their non-immersion peers, as well as their native English-speaking peers. Did that answer your question?
In a sense, not, only because I'm still trying to figure out... In a sense, not, only because I'm still trying to figure out how do you, if it's just a lottery and it's random people that are applying for the program.
So, for, this is a two-way immersion program, and so, the fact that we have, our population needs to be a minimum of one-third Spanish-speaking students in order to serve those needs. So, we really looked at the majority, and the reason why it was chosen to be housed at Polo Road is our high percentage of heritage Spanish-speaking students. If it was a one-way program, then we would not be where it's just majority English-speaking children who are learning through the medium of Spanish. We would not be focusing on closing the achievement gap.
And I think to further expand on that a little bit, the whole lottery portion, it is guided in order to make sure that we keep that ideal percentage of native English speakers and heritage Spanish speakers in each class setting.
Are we marketing it as an achievement gap? Like, I read through your website today, because it really did catch my attention, that, I didn't see it, that that's one of our missions. I saw it in the narrative, and you've said it again, but I did not see that on the website, you know, to inform all people who are setting their kids or thinking about it, that it's to close the achievement gap. Is it marketed, is that, when they come in for the school fair? Is that something that you share with families when they come in?
No, actually, when we market the program, when we market the program, we market it in accordance to the four goals.
Okay.
That we have set out for the program to achieve.
Okay. I still have a few more questions. From the initial group of students, so we're going into the third grade.
Yes.
What has been the attrition? How many students, original students are still in the program?
About what percentage?
Forty started. How many started and how many originals are still in there?
We have lost.
If you can come to the mic so we can hear you.
You have to go.
Yeah, so we can hear you. Thank you so much.
So, our first group of students is entering third grade, and in the first year, we lost no students. We have lost this year, this upcoming school year, we have lost two children that have moved. They are military families, they have left the program. The year before that, I believe, we also lost two. And one middle of the year this year. So, that's for this year. So, the attrition, the numbers in our program are staying and remaining very consistent. Our first group of students, I think there were 24 in each of our, well, 23 and 24, and we are currently still hovering around 22 and 23 in each of those classes.
I did attend Dr. Greg Duncan's independent, your evaluator, and his information. And one of, it seemed in the room between the administrators and teachers that the program was at risk of losing students to other magnet programs within our district. Has that happened? Did that, did you not lose two students this year to go to another magnet?
Where's it? No, not this year.
Okay. And what about your teacher attrition? Has there been attrition? Is that?
We have had, we have hired, we're fully staffed. We have hired three new Spanish teachers to teach in our program this year. And the teachers, of course, one of those was a growth position for third grade. So, every year, there will have to be a position that is created in order to hire another Spanish teacher. So, when we look at those three teachers that we hired, one was in account for the growth position for third grade. The other two Spanish teachers left the program.
May I make a follow-up comment?
Sure.
About student attrition? One of the things that we are also developing, and this is very important to me, and I come from another district with a developed immersion program, and what often happens in the beginning in programs is you don't necessarily, you're focusing so much on starting the program that you don't necessarily think about attrition and how you will address it when performance issues may occur, because every child is different and their performance is going to be different. So, one of the things that we're also creating is a withdrawal process, you know, if I, as a parent, and I'm also an immersion parent, my child happens to learn in Chinese, so there's a big learning curve there for me as well. But as a parent, I can't just walk in and say, "I'm done with this, I don't want to do it, they're not doing well." So, that's where the communication comes in. We need to make sure that we're communicating with parents regarding the student progress. But also, if the teacher sees a student struggling, or if a parent feels like a student is struggling, then we're creating kind of a dual-language immersion response to intervention program, where we will do specific interventions with the child. The child will also sometimes its attention, sometimes its lack of motivation to use the language. So, we're creating tailored-to-each-child procedures that will need to be followed prior to just pulling a child out. So, that, I think, will also really, when, if we're invited another time to speak before the board, we will be able to show what we have done to really stop, kind of, for lack of a better word, pulling attrition that's caused by pulling out.
I have two more questions. Thank you for bearing with me. In terms of the curriculum, is there something special that we use for this, like, I know that we have our standard curriculum in English, but do we use something different and in Spanish for the Spanish portion? Are our books in Spanish? Are?
So, as with any immersion program, it's very important that the program model or reflect the local curriculum. So, we are not teaching math curriculum that is used in a Spanish-speaking country. We are expected and required to teach the South Carolina standards, and so, that's what we do. We are lucky enough that there, the two math curricula that are adopted by the district, Eureka Math and Envision Math, both are provided in Spanish as well. And so, we have chosen for our math curriculum for the immersion program will actually be Envision Math, even though the rest of the school is doing Eureka Math. We made the decision for Envision because it is much more thematic, and all of the resources, specifically K2, provide many more visuals, which is key when learning through the medium of another language. And so, that's our math curriculum. Our science curriculum is also the district's science curriculum. We have been fortunate enough, I mean, thank goodness, we're teaching Spanish. I am a German immersion teacher, and nothing ever existed. So, we are able to find a lot of resources that are the same, that follow our standards, and so, we supplement with that. And then, we do have a literacy program. Our state does not have an adopted literacy program for any of the immersion languages that we teach in the state. That means they do not fund. So, if we wanted to adopt a program, we would probably be out over $200,000 as a district, and I know we're wonderful, but I don't think that there's the funding for that. So, we are using a balanced literacy program and then supplementing, and that's where the provision of authentic resources comes from, that the teachers, we've worked this summer, we were graciously given some funds to purchase leveled readers. And we also do, along with our literacy instruction, we also do assessments to see how the children are progressing in their Spanish literacy as well.
Mark, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time?
Just to make a comment.
Okay.
Just to make a comment, I also attended, I know, the invitation that you extended to us, thank you. And I think it was my understanding that, I think, any program within the district is, you know, at risk of losing students to other magnets. The parents move and they have to go places that are convenient for them, so I don't think that was necessarily a negative, but it happens, I think, with all the programs. But this is exactly what we've asked you to present information to us. We appreciate you doing exactly what we've asked for and preparing some pretty detailed research for us, and we appreciate that. And then, we have another attachment as well, and you've given us more, a lot more meat there. So, I appreciate your coming forth and sharing with us.
You're welcome. And thank you all so much for your support.
Sorry, I haven't come in. Just for clarification purposes, I think there was something stated earlier in the presentation. It is my understanding, and I could be a little misinformed, and so, please forgive me if I am, but when the immersion program was created at Polo Road, the specific purpose of the, one of the purposes of the program was to help close the achievement gap of our Spanish-speaking or native Spanish-speaking students. I think oftentimes, when immersion programs are created in neighboring school districts where the population may be, demographics may be a little bit different, those programs are designed not specifically to help close the achievement gap for those native, but the higher, upper-level performing students. And so, you don't see some of the challenges you may see. Our purpose was a little bit different. The focus was to help our growing Spanish-speaking population of native speakers, to help them and immerse them more quickly and more efficiently into our school, through our school district, by helping to give them instruction in their, in their native language, but also, at the same time, to help our English-speaking students as well, and the interaction between those students. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, Dr. Davis.
Okay.
In the report, we spoke to cognitive interruptions that occur when students who are living, who speak the minority language, which would be Spanish, when they come into an English-only environment in school. And so, that's where we really tried to lay out how that occurs, that we're able to close the achievement gap.
When looking at the achievement gap, are we solely focused on comparing the achievement to the students in that school, or we're looking at students in general? So, for example, specifically, our native-speaking Spanish students who may not be in our immersion program and comparing them to the Spanish, the native Spanish-speaking students who are in the immersion program, to see whether or not those students are performing at a higher level and to give us an understanding whether or not this program is being effective.
Yes, absolutely. Great question. When we began to compare our students, of course, you know, we've only been doing it for three years, so we don't have enough longitudinal data to really support the growth that research shows that we will see once these children have been in the program for five, five or six years. That's when we begin to really see the difference between the performance of the non-immersion children versus the DLI students.
Mr. Manning?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to talk a little bit about the achievement gap, too. You know, I attended a program, similar program in Greenville. They actually have an immersion school there, and they have several different languages that they teach. One of their issues was that they did have a population who were heritage speakers, as you mentioned, in Spanish. But the, so that was one of their goals, to address that issue. But that program with some time has taken off, to where people want to be in that school so badly, that right across from the school where nobody wanted to live are now
Really nice homes.
Really nice homes that I will never be able to afford.
It's a triangle. You're talking about life.
You've been there, and so, I think it does take some time to get these things off the ground, to get them running. That's why I mentioned you have a lot of detail, and I think there are a lot of things that you're doing. But I have seen it be effective, and I know it can be effective at both the achievement gap portion of it and at the students who are also, really, I mean, they get more immersed when they have students that that's the language they speak, and I think that it is kind of a mutually beneficial when the right instruction and systems and supports are in place. So, I have seen it be effective, and I think y'all are doing a great job, a lot of, like I said, a lot of detail, a lot of things I look forward to. Us, one day, having even more homes over there that I can't afford. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, we will progress to item 13.1, agenda items for August 14, 2018. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, proposed for future agenda items scheduled for August 14, 2018. We have contractual matters regarding the transfer of sale and lease of property, student appeals, adult education requests, special recognitions, a legislative update, approval of GBEB staff conduct, and a proposal of policy revisions for Section D.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are there any additional items anyone would like to see on this or a future agenda? Thank you, Dr. Davis. At this time, we'll move on to item 14.1. This is the second opportunity we have for public participation, so if there's anyone who did not get an opportunity to sign up for the first session, is free to do so at this time. I don't have anyone signed up. So, having said that, we will move on to item 15.1, board and superintendent comments, and we will start on my left with Mr. Shad, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. I just want to congratulate our new elected officers. I know y'all are going to do a great job, and especially to Madam Chair, you did a masterful job with your first board meeting. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Hudson and Ms. Meisner for coming and addressing us tonight, and also want to share that my negative or no vote was not a reflection. I wholeheartedly support the referendum that we've put forward. I was hopeful that we would include an aquatic center, which I feel ties in with the safety of our children. But safety is a priority, and I fully support and will work with my board to make sure, ensure that the referendum as proposed will pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Dr. Oakland Johnson?
No comments. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Dr. Caution Parker?
Good meeting, and thank you very much for being here.
Mr. Manning?
Yeah, I have no worry label than I am in the meeting night, so.
Well, you've got some credits built up, then. You've got some credits built up.
Yeah, because it was a short meeting, so I have extra time. But, Madam Chair, thank you very much for
Start over.
Yeah. Mr. Shad is not just mad, apparently. There's a glitch in the system. But, Madam Chair, thank you for a great meeting. You did a great job, first time out the gate, and masterful, as Mr. Shad said. You know, I thought long and hard about this bond referendum. That's all yours.
Never mind. Maybe.
Yeah, that's right. I, so, you know, I thought long and hard about this referendum going into it. It is a big deal to put forward and ask to the community for this much money, and I do think the district did a great job of going out to the community, the board members and everybody, and making sure that we had our priorities right. I think we got it right with safety is the number-one priority, equity and access for our students, to make sure that everybody has a fair shake, and certainly maintenance. You know, if we have leaky roofs next to safety, you know, we just can't have those things, and it costs a lot of money. And I know that, you know, Public Trust and Dr. Caution Parker talked about the fact that this district has a long history of maintaining trust when it comes to our bonds and using that money, as we stated. You know, we were so efficient last time, we built this building with savings from our last bond, and it was a real value add to our students. And I think, you know, we've come a long time, if I think back in history, because I'm going to go all the way back to like Egypt and the Roman times, you know, government built things for legacy of a leader, and this is not about that. This is about the safety of our students, it's about the education of our students, it's about the success of our community, whether you have a student in our school or not, because everybody's fate is tied together. And so, I'm very excited about this opportunity to bring this forward and to make sure that we secure the future of our community, not just our schools, but our community, with the work that will be done from this bond. So, I appreciate everybody being here. Ms. Meisner, thank you for coming to talk to us. I'm always up for a good challenge to make sure I do the right thing and do better. It's always good to get that, so, challenge met. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Mr. Plank, you've got about 30 seconds, I think, left after all that.
Yeah, I think that took all my time, and you guys know me, so.
Just kidding.
First, to Ms. Mackey, you're well-done tonight. I remember a year ago feeling it was 20 degrees hotter, and you did really, really well.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that. Also, just wanted to let you guys know, we have an annual retreat that, which is here. When I hear retreat, I think Grove Park Inn or someplace out at the beach. Retreat here upstairs, using the facilities in the room, just coming up with our priorities for this next academic year. We were successful in doing that, so I look forward to serving over this next academic year and what we have to bring forward. And then, to the bond, I think we've certainly hit that home. One of the, the last thing I'll say about that is, I tend to be thinking in terms of numbers, and what does the number mean now and what, relative to what it meant 10 years ago? And if, it's roughly about like the future value of inflation, just about the same dollars from that perspective. I just want to put some relativity there to be able to maintain the changes we need to make. But it's a real pleasure. I look forward to school starting here next month, and you guys enjoy the rest of your summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. At this, I think that the beauty of going last is that you just say ditto, and I echo my colleagues' sentiments. As I always say, for the people who have to be here tonight, thank you for being here, because you have to be. For those who chose to be here, to take their personal time, to be here, and to glean information and to share your opinions and feedback, we appreciate that. A point of personal privilege, I want to thank my piece, a little piece of my family for being here, my husband Stacy and my daughter Faith. Thank you all for being here. Nice to see, you know, an unconditional friendly face in the audience, so, thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. I don't want to belabor the points that have been made tonight with regard to everyone who's presented, thank you. I think we've, I've already thanked them individually. With regard to the bond question, I'm glad that we have overwhelming support with that. Safety, equity, and
Safety, equity, and being mindful of our taxpayers' dollars has been, have been our foundational sentiments with regard to this process. And it's been a long process. It hasn't been anything that we've started recently, so I want people to know that our priorities are safety, our equity, and being mindful of taxpayers' dollars. To that end, I've said before, I am one board member, but we operate as a unit of seven. So what you see here, we vote, however we vote, we still work, we still work as a team, and we will support, you know, the initiatives and emissions to support our district and the end user, which is our students and the teachers in the classroom. So we appreciate all that everyone in this room does to contribute to that, and I just want to thank my colleagues for their support to that end as well. Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, congratulations to all of our board members on receiving that next level of boardsmanship. It is a prime example of what we talk about all the time, and that's the commitment of our board to do their work and do their job effectively and efficiently, that all of our board members have stepped up to the next level throughout the course of this year, and I'm very appreciative of them for their commitment to the students and the constituents of Richland School District, too. To our parents of students new to the district and returning students, you are encouraged and welcome to register now for the upcoming school year. And if you haven't done so already, you can log into Parent Portal to complete the annual registration process. Registration nights are also taking place here at R2I2 on Monday, July 30, and Thursday, August 9, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Check the Richland 2 website for detailed registration instructions. The first day of school is less than a month away. I said that the first day of school is less than a month away. And so 6th and 9th graders will return to campus on Tuesday, August 21, for Step Up to 6 and Fresh Start. The first official, the first official first day of school is Wednesday, August 22. Administrators will continue their summer learning and get re-energized at tomorrow's district in-service. Transformational speaker, consultant, and bestselling author April Lewis will deliver the keynote. Next month, we will welcome teachers back for several days of in-service and classroom preparation during the week of August 13. We've had a very successful emergency safety drill at Jackson Creek Elementary. I want to thank district staff, the Richland County Sheriff's Department, Richland County Emergency Services, the City of Columbia, 911 Communications Center, the Fire Department, and Emergency Preparation Department for conducting the drill with us as we worked to keep our schools safe. And if you didn't have an opportunity to see that in action, that area was completely shut down, and we had a full-out, live, active shooter drill, as if it, with real active shooters, teachers, people playing the role of students. We had 911 call, EMS. It was a wonderful opportunity to really see what our response time would be like. We had a reunification meeting to discuss some of our successes, some of the challenges, some things we need to shore up, and all those wonderful things. And so I'm very appreciative to the staff that worked very hard, Will Anderson, Chuck, for putting that, putting that together. That's something I asked them to do at the very beginning of the school year, that I wanted to see that, and I really appreciate all the efforts that you guys did to connect everyone that was necessary to do that. So thank you so much. School safety and enhancements are in the recently-approved 10-year facilities plan, and I want to thank the school board for its leadership on taking action to support the facilities plan, and for tonight's approval of placing a bond referendum for capital projects on the November election ballot. Thank you. The students and the parents of Richland 2 will be indebted to you for your service and putting this forward for our voters to consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And you just absolutely, actually jolted my memory about something else. I've gotten a good bit of emails and phone calls from people with regard to safety who wanted to know specifics, and you're not specifically, and we've said this in previous workshops, but not everyone in the room has had the benefit, or who's watching on YouTube has the benefit of hearing. We can't be specific with regard to all of our safety concerns, because that would alert people who may not intend to do well of what some of our, you know, loopholes are, and so we are very mindful of safety in all of our schools, but with regard to specifics, we can't be, just in order to be, in order to be safe. But I wanted to make sure that was clear, because I've gotten a lot of questions and concerns about that, and just wanted to make people understand why we're not itemizing each issue, each item that we are addressing with regard to safety, because that would defeat the purpose of trying to be safer. At this time, we'll move on to item 16.1. It's our second executive session, but we don't have a need to move into a second executive session, because we were able to accomplish everything that we needed to in our first executive session, which means there will be no voting on executive session items for 17.1. So at this time, we'll move to item 18.1, and I'd love to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad, I saw you. Can we get a second? Can I get a second? Mr. Plank, consider ourselves conjured. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.